Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, October 26, 2020. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that all council is present, including the city administrator, with the exception of Councilor Gunn, who will not be present. Up next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask all of you to join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is sitting behind the city administrator, Ken Rath.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. With that, just a couple of general items. We've received many inquiries about Halloween. The city of Saco does not regulate Halloween activities such as trick or treating. We encourage you to look to the main CDC for guidance on all seasonal activities as we try to navigate the holidays safely. View their guidance here at www-main.gov/decd/checklists/seasonalactivities. The US CDC also has helpful information for the holiday season at www.cdc.gov/dailylifecopingholidays. The city is happy to answer questions, but regarding safety practices for Halloween, please refer to the CDC guidelines on seasonal activities. Item B is voting reminder, polling location change, extended hours voting. Again, on Election Day, November 3, 2020, all voting will occur at the Thornton Academy's Linnell Gymnasium at 438 Main Street. Please take note that this is a change in the location from the previous elections. The polls will open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and staff limitations, voters will be separated alphabetically rather than by ward, once they are in single polling place, much like during the June primary. The city partnered with Thornton Academy to offer voters a larger polling place that enables better social distancing and provides plenty of parking with two lots available for use on Election Day. And then you can also still use any of the methods listed at www.saco-main.org/elections, including absentee by mail, by Dropbox, or hand-delivered, or voting early in person at City Hall, 300 Main Street. As a reminder, the last day to request absentee ballot in-person or in-person voting is Friday, October 30, 2020, unless a special circumstance exists. Friday, October 30, 2020, the early voting at City Hall will stay open until 6:00 PM. Just please take note of that change. Also, the seniority program, we would like to thank the Saco Parks and Rec. They have upcoming meal program information. The Parks and Rec will be bringing back an occasional version of the meal distribution program for Saco residents and seniority members. The goal is to offer special meals in place of our annual meal events, potentially on a monthly basis, depending on sponsorship opportunities. Upcoming meal information is Veterans Day, Wednesday, November 11, 2020, which is generously being sponsored by the Saco Valley Credit Union. Thanksgiving Meal, Thursday, November 19, 2020, is in place of the annual luncheon. Saco Community Center parking lot is where you can pick up those meals between 11:00 and 12:30. And restaurant for the Thanksgiving Meal will be the Golden Rooster menu to be determined. To request a meal, meal signups will be available only within the following dates. Veterans Day Meal, 11/4 or November 4th to November 11th, and the Thanksgiving Meal, November 12th to November 19th. Open to Saco residents and seniority members 50-plus. To sign up, please email Ameier@saco-main.org or call 207-283-3139, extension 807. Again, 207-283-3139, extension 807. Thank you. With that, we have item five, committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondence at this time? Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, some people might have seen us out and about at the library and the museum. Although we will not be having the traditional Festival of Trees this year, we have started decorating both the museum and the library, and we will be having an outdoor walk-through, drive-through light display, which will be run the same period of time that the Festival of Trees normally does. So hopefully, we'll be getting that up and ready around Thanksgiving. So if people visit the library right now, they'll start to see some decorations popping up. And again, we'll have more information on the exact dates because we will be having a day that I do believe Santa will be there and some different setups and props for photo opportunities. And again, it will be a walk-through, drive-through, safe, more of a festival of lights throughout the library and the museum outside.
Thank you, Councilor McPhail. Any further committee correspondence to council? Seeing no further committee correspondence, moving on to item six, public comment. City Administrator Ken Rath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
I have none at this time right now. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to anyone participating via Zoom. If you'd like to speak to the council, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine for those calling in on a phone, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, for those who would like to provide public comment to the city council, please use the raise hand function of the Zoom platform or star nine for those using a cellular phone, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition, moving on from public comment up to item seven, which is approval of minutes. There are no minutes to approve. There's no consent agenda item tonight. That brings us to item nine, which is an action item, and that is item A, a joint meeting with the planning board. At this time, if the planning board members on could use the raise hand feature so that Andrew can promote you to the main screen, please. Okay. So let me start by saying welcome and thank you for joining us, to all the planning board members. In my now five years on council, this is the first time that the planning board and city council have gotten together in a joint meeting. So again, thank you for taking another night to have another meeting. I know you folks are just as busy as we are. So again, thank you, and thank you for joining us. The meeting of this is really to, if you checked city code 434, which is the planning board subsection A and then subsection three. Let me see if I can find that myself here. The city planning board shall meet with the city council at least twice each year to report on problems, progress, and needs, to make recommendations to this council, and to be assigned whatever advisory tasks the council may request. So given that this is the first time we've done this, at this time, I would just like to open it up and kind of just, anyone that would like to speak, please go ahead and use the raise hand feature, and you'll be called upon, and just so that we're really make sure that we use the raise hand feature because we've got now two boards all together. So, but again, I do thank you for taking the time to meet with us and going through this process. Chairman Drew, would you like to say anything before we have a rare roundtable here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate the time that the council has taken this evening to speak with us. I know that I and other members of the council of the planning board, excuse me, have been wanting and asking for some time to have a joint meeting with the council. We had done this in the many years that I've been doing this in Saco. We had done this in the past and found it very productive from the standpoint of learning what is in each individual council member's minds with respect to where the city is headed, what problems we have to deal with, and more specifically, how we would put our heads together to deal with these problems and solve them. And so, once again, I'm appreciative that we're doing this evening. I'm going to let, obviously, individual planning board members speak for themselves as they would like to this evening, but I would like to share with you just briefly some of my goals as the chairman of the planning board. We, of course, are right in the middle right now and heavily in the middle of completing the revisions to the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, site plan standards, and subdivision review standards. And want you to know that we've been putting a lot of hours in on this along with the remaining zoning ordinance revision committee members. And I think we're making some really good progress. We're getting down to, I think, a final document that will really work well for the city. The thing is, what I would like to say to the members of the council and the mayor is my view of this, as Bob Hamblin is a city planner now, so succinctly put it a while ago, these are all living documents that require continuous review and change and input. And to that end, I have asked Denise Clavett to make sure that our planning board agendas from this day forward, or from, yeah, from this day on, include a specific workshop portion of each meeting so that we can do a number of things. One, of course, is the planning staff or the economic development and planning staff always has a number of items that they think need attention and that the planning board should work on before we make recommendations to you folks about changing ordinance requirements or, say, plan review standards or subdivision standards. I've asked her to make sure that we set aside workshop time for that very specifically each meeting that we have in the future. I'm encouraging all the planning board members to continuously think about problems that we deal with every day and to come forward with recommendations, you know, for workshop items that we need to work on. And then ultimately, we recommend up to you in the form of changes that we need to make to our regulations. What I would like to do, and what I would plan to do from this point forward, is as you folks have your regular meetings every week, when it's appropriate, I would like to participate in the public comment portion at the beginning of each one of your meetings to bring the council up to date, council and mayor up to date on where I think we are on specific issues. If there are larger issues that are more problematic or need more attention, then I will ask that we be put specifically on the agenda to discuss these items with you. But the thrust of what I'm saying here is that we, I think this is a continuing process, and we need to constantly be on top of it and constantly communicating with you about what's going on. I hope in the future that we have more of these meetings. This one tonight is probably not going to get that involved in specific issues, so that's fine. But at least it's a threshold, it's a start where we re-initiate this very, very important negotiation or communication process between the planning board and the council. We need to hear from you as to what you think the most important issues are, your ideas about dealing with them, and how we, as a planning board, can be an instrument, can be a tool in your toolbox, if you will, to get some of these problems solved and some of the things remedied, of course, that we deal with every day in Saco. And so, without going on and on, I would like to, I guess from this point on, say that as we embark, as we plan to embark on a new comprehensive plan for Saco, I see these communications between planning board members and you folks as mayor and council as more important than ever. We need to be looking at, you know, where we're going in the future and how we want to get there. And so with that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'll end this particular part of my comments and anxious to hear from each and every one of you this evening about what you think planning board should be doing and what you believe are the most important issues we should be dealing with. And with that, I thank you all again for your participation this evening.
Thank you very much. Up next is Peter. Peter has his hand raised. Peter, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. And I've got to tell you that this is a real special treat for me, being, talking to members of the council who I had as students at Saco Middle School. The mayor, Jody, Nathan, Marshall. It's just a treat to see them involved in city government going forward. And, but I'd like to talk a little bit what, how the council can help the planning board. We need information. We need to know what is important in your minds in establishing the growth of the city of Saco. As you know, my wheelhouse is Saco history, and I'd just like to tell you a little bit of some history that happened in relationship to my father and other citizens when the mills left, when we had basically a serious recession in the late 50s. My father, the mayor, some aldermen got together, and they purchased some land to try to attract industry here, now called the Industrial Park. Other councils have purchased more land. The Industrial Park has grown, it's on the other side of Route 1 as well. But they were very, very forward-thinking. It took a lot of years for the first major, for the first three or four major industries to establish in that industrial park, but look at what we have now. That's the basis for a lot of our tax base in the city of Saco. And one thing that disturbs me, Mr. Mayor and councilors, is that I wonder, I sincerely wonder if we have the same attitude towards establishing a deeper tax base, a more secure tax base for the city of Saco. As I said at the conference that we had, was it last week or the week before? We need to pay attention to some basics and fundamentals. I don't know how you feel about all this, and I'd like some feedback, but we are besieged with requests by developers for residential housing. We established the MU zones out on the Portland Road, but it didn't come to fruition in terms of what we thought the planning board at that time thought would happen. Most of it has turned into residential units near the Scarborough Line. That's very unfortunate. We've only got one shot at the land that we have. God's not giving us any more land unless we buy Bitterfield or buy Scarborough. We're not going to have any more land. This is it. This is what we have. And I say that facetiously, of course. So, just as I prepared my students with basics and fundamentals of writing and understanding and communication, I'm not so sure we're preparing the city of Saco for what's ahead. At that conference the other night, we were given the task of, what would you do if the city received $10 million? I heard things such as, "Well, I like boating, so I'd like to see a marina." Other people said, "Well, we should buy Saco Island East, and I can't wait until I sit on the top deck and have a cocktail. We should do this, we should do that." Has anyone given serious thought to the traffic problem in Saco? Do we have an ongoing plan? Is there light at the end of the tunnel in terms of the traffic problem? There's one way on and one way off of Saco Island, there's one road. The idea of a third bridge has been discussed since the 1950s. I remember it as a kid, my father talking about it with other people in Saco. That has never happened. Is that the best way to do it? I don't know. We've talked about, I'm on the executive committee of the Chamber of Commerce, and we've talked with planning boards in the past, we've met with them, the city council from Bitterfield-Saco, joint meetings, and we've talked about another exit for Bitterfield. Thank God, Saco has addressed that problem in that we're going to be having some action happening with our exits. But unless we can get Bitterfield and Saco to work together on this, I'm not so sure anything's going to happen soon. And if it doesn't happen soon, then how can we develop Saco Island? I mean, it's just pie in the sky. You bring a lot of, all those people, bring them onto Saco Island for what would be a wonderful time in a restaurant, a hotel, and experience a marina. Those are great things to happen, but they have to be timed right. And I don't think we're chucking off the boxes one step after another. And it's confusing to me when I'm trying to deliberate on whether a subdivision is right for Saco because we're getting, we need to further establish the tax base. Now, there's a lot of us, I'm a baby boomer. There's a lot of us that are retiring, and there's a huge demand for elderly apartments. And we're told with some of these projects, well, they're going to be for the elderly, they're not going to have many school kids or probably any at all to fill up your schools. Well, our school system, according to the superintendent, is breaking at the seams right now. And even just a few kids, maybe just too many. We have to, we have to establish that secure tax base. You know, we have a lot of assets. Saco has tremendous assets in terms of its people, in terms of its natural resources. But are we using them the right way? Have we got the tools so we can make the right kinds of decisions and have them hold up in a court of law so that our natural resources aren't spoiled, aren't ruined? My father and his group left the industrial park that you see now and a tradition of putting your nose to the grindstone. It's not glamorous, it's not pleasant, it might not even be very political. But it's the right thing, it was the right thing to do then, and it's the right thing to do now, and I don't see it right now. I'm sorry, I have to, I don't see it happening right now. I hope that when the Lord calls my name, that I'll be able to feel that Saco is on its way and the future is beautiful, the future is bright. Saco Island is on its way, we protected certain lands, we've established, increased the tax base through selective industry and manufacturing. And that's my dilemma. I don't know how you feel about it. It's difficult for me and other planning board members to deliberate and vote on things when we're not sure it'll hold up when it gets to the level of the city council. So Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, I'm used to saying Mr. Chairman to Don, he and I are both the same age. He graduated in '65 from St. Louis, I was still in the academy, '65. But he owns Saco. So, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you very much. I know I took up quite a few minutes, but it's something I just really had to say and put out there. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else would like to speak? Again, please use the raise hand feature. Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pete, Peter, he had asked a couple of questions on, not as a council as a whole, but you specifically identified each councillor what they're thinking. And to sum it up, I mean, there's a lot of work, and this is why the council appoints a board to take on all the minutia and details of development within the city. I just, when I think of development, I think of balance. So when you do subdivisions of residential, I hope that in the background, there's also industrial or commercial also being better. So when I look at our tax base, I prefer to see balance for projects that come down the road. Now, I know you don't actually select the projects. They're presented to you by investors and business people, things like that. But again, when we can aim for something that's a little bit more balanced, obviously, a third, third, third is not like probably going to work out. But again, when you can target, aim for that as a goal, that's kind of where I kind of see how the development of Saco is to happen. However, I also recognize that you are a separate entity and you have your own. Again, you spend a lot more time really delving into the details. So a lot of times, I just refer to your judgment and things like that. Sometimes it does, I might not agree with it, and that's fine as an individual. I have that ability to just say, hey, this is what I believe. But for the most part, I take for value that a due process has been followed and that everything has been looked at. So, again, I look for balance of how the development and growth of Saco will happen.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I think that listening to Councilor Archer's opinion is, you know, idealistically a great approach. One of the things that I've kind of discovered in my time on the planning board is, you know, our role kind of contradicts or, you know, is not as intuitive as you think. You know, we don't really have a lot of say in approving or not approving projects based on their type. Our primary role is to be applying our existing ordinances and standards as well as the comprehensive plan to the applicant's proposal. And with that being said, I think a lot of time needs to be focused and reviewed by both parties in this process as we are currently in, in the zoning revision, and will soon be embarking on our comprehensive plan revision. What we seem to be running across, and I think, I think the majority of us as planning board members would like to know, you know, the council's thoughts for that vision of development. Obviously, you guys have got a lot of burden trying to keep, you know, the functionality and financial portion of the city running, and you're relying on us to kind of oversee the developmental portion of the city process. But we'd like to have that, the feedback is if you feel like it's sustainable financially, the demands that are placed on you, given what I would say is a disproportionate amount of residential development versus our industrial development. Looking at it as a layperson, you know, the amount of land that we have available for industrial development is, you know, extremely out of proportion with the amount of land that's available for residential, particularly when you read the comprehensive plan and where the visions of the city are going. To Mr. Scottress's point, you know, in that workshop about what you do with $10 million, you hear a lot of people wanting to enhance the quality of life in Saco, typically given their interests. I mean, obviously, we're all drawn to our community, we all have a love of our community. That's why we're involved in these boards and whatnot. And I guess that, you know, holds to my thought is, what can we do to just really focus on continuing to enhance the lives of people that are here now? Part of that is obviously tax burden in the future. Make sure we can be truly lifelong residents of Saco and planning effectively. What I feel, you know, particularly a little challenged about is how we are in some ways lax. Mr. Mayor, you had indicated you've been involved in the city council and the mayor for over five years, and we haven't had one of these meetings when in reality, according to our ordinance, we should have had 10 of these meetings. One little thing that we ought to be doing a little bit better, but the demands that are placed on us from all aspects of the city but the demands of, that are placed on us from all aspects of the city make it very hard to find that time. Um, and as we're working through this zoning ordinance revision, um, that you hopefully will see in the next couple of months, um, feeling a lot of pressure again, where we're trying to make corrections to some of the experiences that we've had as planning board members. Um, some of us not as, um, with such a lengthy history as others, but they, they've all brought this great insight, and it's our one opportunity to really, truly steer the direction of where our community wants to go. And I think that's what's so important, that we hear each other's opinions. You as council, the pressures you're feeling financially and how development should go to benefit you guys financially, um, or us as a group financially, um, and our concerns about how development's going and, and the feedback that we're getting with, with demands of, of traffic and sewer and utilities. Um, and, you know, I'm sensing sometimes that, you know, many of our, of our meetings are involved with a lot of legal representation. I don't think I ever anticipated developers having such big legal teams. And I'm also feeling that as we're working as a group, you know, we're being instructed sometimes that we don't have the right to necessarily make a course correction for our community. Um, given that some of the decisions that we want to go into with regards to zoning, um, apparently create a conflict with the comprehensive plan, and therefore would be a violation. And at some point, you know, we have to make a course correction, and I'm sure you'll be addressed to some of the topics that we've run up to as it's presented to you. Um, and that would be one of those reasons, I think, it's so important that we continue to have this two-way conversation so that we are truly on the same page, we can understand the risks that we're all taking on with our recommendations, um, to steer the community that we all love in, in a very positive and long-lasting direction. Um, those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Counselor Copeland.
Thank you, I'm really glad that we're all talking about this, because this has been bothering me for a long time. The disconnect that we, you know, you guys are making your own decisions, and we're making ours, and we really do need to pull it together. Um, I think we can all agree that Saco needs to be the place to live, work, and play. You know, we, it's a wonderful community, and I agree with everyone that we should continue to make it that special place that it has been, and to leave it that way for the people who come after, after us. So, um, I totally agree that the residential is, uh, really strong, and that's one of the things that we, uh, talked about earlier was that, uh, that the residential should be done thoughtfully. You know, we talked about this, but then I haven't seen any steps taken. So I, it, I'm glad that that's brought up, because that's really important. Um, our schools can't, you know, we are looking at this new, uh, school structuring and, you know, what we're gonna do there, well, the school board is and some community members. So, we need to, um, think about that really carefully. And, and we also need to think about our tax base. We do need more business here. I was, I was literally shocked when I heard how little business Saco had, uh, drawn in rather than, uh, comparative to our neighbors. Um, I think that we do need to be guided by the comprehensive plan, which is wonderful that we're having this meeting before that's all started. I think one of the things that we need to, to do is, um, have a, a, a nature-based economy, because we have so much here in Saco, it's not even funny. Um, you know, we need to clean the water up. It, it's, it's not clean, we, our clambers can't clam. The whole thing is shut down in Saco Bay, we need to clean up the water. That's Goose Fair Brook and the Saco River. And some of that has to do with overflows from the, uh, wastewater recovery on both sides of the river. Um, that needs to be a priority. And I think, you know, when, whenever I mention it, people are very happy about this, but the developers are not, because this, it might be more expensive. But if you look at the ecology school and the green building, I mean, they have, you know, their building is way beyond. But, uh, if we were to be known as the community that cared so much about our environment, that we put it as an integral piece into our community and our buildings, um, you know, I think so, if we clean up the water, we make the place, uh, really about our environment and keeping it, you know, healthy. And the other thing is aquaculture. I, I think that that's, uh, once the water's cleaned up, they won't even talk to us about aquaculture out in Saco Bay because of the, uh, actually polluted water with E. coli. Um, so once we get that cleaned up, we can think about that. But there's also land-based aquaculture. Um, you know, there's something that we could do up, uh, before the dams up there. Um, and if we can entice those kind of fishermen-type people, um, our fishermen, we've talked to, I've talked to them, and, uh, I've talked to some of them. And they know that they're not gonna be fishing forever, so they want, they wanna be involved in this other, um, you know, explosion is what it could be of a new industry in Saco. Uh, why can't Saco be known for being environmentally friendly, using the natural resources, but in a really great way? Building our infrastructure, our parks, our trails, our bike paths. All of these things make Saco a better place to live, help the environment, teach our kids how to, um, you know, what is out there. You know, there's so much out there, you know, you got the heat, you got the, the low tides, you got, uh, all kinds of places that, uh, you can walk in, the, all the things that are growing and point out invasive plants, and, and just get really involved in the community. Um, I, I think that's huge, I think that's huge. And if, and if that happens, and we get a little reputation for that, I think businesses will come here, because they will want their children to come here and go to school. So it's kind of, you know, we've gotta get the businesses first, because our residential, um, and, and one other thing about residential, I'm trying to get the, uh, Conservation Commission, I think they're working on it, to get a tree-cutting ordinance for the developers. They come in and they raise everything. No, we need to have a tree ordinance where clearcutting is not permitted, you know? And, you know, if they do have a real need for that, then it just comes before a review process. So we're not saying we're gonna like, uh, take over people's rights and what they could do to their property, but we also need to make sure that we don't become like Portland, a forest city that has none. You know, we want, we like Saco the way it is, you know, we, that's why we're all living here, right? It's a beautiful, beautiful place. And I think that, um, considering all these things and getting some of those ideas in the comprehensive plan, uh, is the solution. One of the things that I talk about often, and probably you've heard me so many times, you don't wanna hear it again, but a green bat, I mean, that exemplifies, uh, what we need in Saco. I mean, there's trails, we're working on connectivity, um, the Parks and Rec Department, we've got them, uh, actually, it's a conservation, uh, commission, with some help from, um, G I S guy at Parks and Rec. We're getting our, our parks, they're gonna be on an app soon, very soon, it's there. We have some students who, uh, done some storyboards on the parks, we have photographs. The Conservation Commission has, uh, gone to each and every park, people were assigned to them, come up with a list of their attributes, whether it's, you know, good for seniors, there's parking, or, you know, where much, whatever, you know, whatever the attributes are there. Uh, so that's coming out. So all these things, to me, points to, um, a nature-based economy. And I think we could capitalize that big time. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any other comments? Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, first, I just wanted to say it's been an honor to serve my community as the newest planning board member, and I appreciate the appointment. Um, you know, there's a tremendous amount of opportunity as a planning board member, and a lot of issues and topics come before us, uh, and I'm just, um, proud to have the opportunity to maybe influence things in the right direction, as I know each of you serving your time and donating your time are doing the same. Um, I also wanna touch upon, I think, what, what Jeff and Peter had said, as my colleagues on the planning board, and, and also as, um, Counselor Copeland and Counselor Archer had noted. I think we all have a common interest in prudently growing Saco. And we may have some different ideas about how best to do it, but I think the recent Economic Development Conference that we had highlighted some underlying thoughts and concerns that we've all had, which is the imbalance of our residential to commercial base, and what strain that place is on our overall community and the taxpayers that we're representing. Which I think poses us a, a, a challenge, but a great opportunity. Uh, and I think one of my observations in my short time on the board that I've noticed is that, uh, and Jeff touched on this, you know, we're supposed to be coming together a couple of times a year, but I think we need to be working more collaboratively, not just with council and planning board. Uh, I'd like to see it across the entire, um, city. With the school department, we've noted that some of the projects that have come forward may place additional strain on the school department. So sometimes, rather than thinking about things from a council view, which might be financially and, and legally driven, and then there's a planning board view, there's a school department view, there's an infrastructure public works view. Uh, I highly recommend that there's an opportunity for us to collaborate going forward and a common vision of how do we best build out Saco? And how do we prudently do that to ensure that we're not constantly living in a situation where we're in a chain reaction type, uh, situation, where one domino falls, causing us to react to another domino? But if we go into it collectively, we can have a common vision that says, hey, if we do this, the consequence of that is also this other thing that we should be planful for. And I think we'll better serve the community of Saco in doing that. And rather than trying to be putting out fires, we might be, um, demonstrating a common vision and getting confidence in our community and, and our residents to say, you know, we do have a vision to Peter's point earlier about what are we gonna go forward with? And what are we leaving behind for those generations behind us? So I am excited about that, because I haven't really seen it work in that way yet in my short time, but I think it's an easy thing to do for us to collaborate together as some of these projects come forward, and we make sure that we're looking at things holistically. I think the other observation I've had in my short time, it's really come out with the, the zoning ordinance revision and, and the standards revisions for both subdivision and site plan, is that when we open it up to public forum, what I, what I'm starting to hear is maybe there's some perceived public perception out there, uh, where we don't have enough transparency. There's been a number of projects that have come forward, um, that maybe our community isn't supportive of, but there's some strong push from developers to try and bring these types of projects to Saco. And it's on us, serving the community, to make sure that we, um, extend as much transparency as possible. Now, there will always be things that maybe we can't, uh, fully share and divulge, and maybe some stuff that needs to go into executive session. And maybe there's some things that need to go into executive session between the council and the planning board, if we're being tasked with trying to set the vision and what the future looks like of where we put certain projects, and where we do certain developments, and how we go about doing it. Um, but it's never a good thing, and I'm not judging right or wrong and putting blame, but it's just my observation, it's not a good thing to have public perception that we're not being transparent, serving, you know, our, our, our community. So I think that's another opportunity for us going forward to say, uh, if we're gonna start a process around a particular project, whether it revol- involves different zoning, whether it has a large impact on a certain part of an existing zone or in the community, we should try and, and be thoughtful around what can we share with the community, get them to be excited maybe about the same opportunity we have, and buy into the project versus feeling, um, that they're not being heard, and that at the end of the day, um, it doesn't matter what they say in public comment, because there's a small group navigating the decisions of the city. Um, when I don't think that's the case, and I hope it's not, but I think there's certainly opportunity there for us to maybe change that perception, uh, get greater support from the community as we work more collaboratively. Again, thank you for your time and for your service, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. Matt?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you. Um, just overall, I think I, I agree with, um, most of my colleagues here on the planning board are saying. I think, I, I think what we need as a, as a board is the communication, um, direction. I think the, I think the board as a whole has concerns and thoughts, and I think we need to work on communicating that to you and, and getting feedback and input. Um, what I think the board has, um, lost, lost its way maybe, I don't know, the, distracted possibly. Um, we need to, we need to be focused on administering site plan and subdivision and the ordinance, and not, while we are concerned about a lot of these, um, items or, or issues, um, that we seem to all be in agreement on, or most of us are. Moving forward, I think we need to just understand, I think, the, the direction, as some of the colleagues has, have stated. I think that's the part that we're, that we're missing. I think that's, that's what I feel sitting, you know, on the board for my time, and, um, I, I think that, I think that's, I think, excuse me, I think that's the, the biggest help, I think, for us, if we could get that, I think that communication piece. Um, those are only my thoughts for the evening, uh, thank you again.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, um, overall, you know, like others have said, I, I agree with what's been said, you know? Certainly not surprisingly, I would think at this point, I mean, for the last seven years, I've been talking about tax burden distribution, uh, and the concern it has been to me. Uh, so it's, it's encouraging to hear that it is to others too. Um, but specifically, I, I'm, I'm pleased that the chair has decided to add this workshop opportunity, because I've had a, a growing list for at least five-plus years, specific to whether it's zoning or planning-related, um, or even city code that needs to go through the planning process. So I'm looking forward to, uh, having that opportunity to start that process, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Peter?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'd like to address a couple of remarks. Um, Marshall, you had said, uh, you would work from a balance, whether it's thirds, thirds, half, whatever it is. I think we're all trying to achieve the balance. But sometimes, sometimes what you have to do is something is so out of whack that you have to put more effort and more resources in that particular sector, or that particular, those particular tasks to achieve the balance. It's almost impossible to operate consistently and maintain equal balance. It almost never happens. But the striving for that, and the effort towards that end is what's important. What I'm saying is, I'm not seeing it right now. I'm not seeing certain critical issues being addressed to the point where we can have some sort of consensus and conclusion and wrap up and clean up some of the issues, uh, such as, as I said earlier, the traffic, such as, for example, solar in Saco. Um, I must tell you, and I've told the planning board this many times, people come into the Wayway store all the time, and they know I'm accessible, I'm probably the most, one of the most accessible people in the screens here tonight. Uh, and it's very difficult, uh, for me to maintain a balancing act and keep my integrity as a planning board member, but I, I try my very best to do it. But I hear all kinds of things, and this idea about solar that's, that has come into play. Our future is renewable energy, and that's great, and that, I, I've been saying that for years. But how do we fit that into Saco's plans? Saco's, uh, wish to maintain green space and buffer zones and all the rest of it. Uh, there's one parcel, and it is scheduled to have a solar farm on it, that's great, there'll be others as well. Now, we're sending you, um, a proposed, uh, solar zoning ordinance? So please, please, look at that carefully, study it, if you need legal advice, do it. Because this is the first of its con- If you need legal advice, do it because this is the first of its kind. And I hate to see us make some serious mistakes in that area right at the beginning. As I said, solar is the future. We have to have solar. We have to have renewable energy. So please look at that. The other thing, you know, sometimes as a planning board member, I feel intimidated by the legal teams that are thrown at us. Developers come in with experts and legal advice and after a while, you don't know what to believe because sometimes what the, what the Saco residents say or people from Saco citizens, people with Saco citizens that have legal expertise say contradicts what representatives or the developers would say. And it gets my head spinning sometime and I was saying, okay, now who's right? Whose figures are correct? Who's telling the truth? And because figures can say anything you want them to say. That's one thing I've learned in my 72 years. You can draw conclusions from figures. You have 10 people, you can get 10 different conclusions. I know if you have 10 Greeks in the room, you'll get 10 different conclusions for syrup. So that can be very intimidating and I'm glad it was brought up earlier. I also like to bring up one last thing. Sean had mentioned executive session between the planning board and the city council. I think that's necessary at times. I just want you to think about that down the road if you think that's necessary, if we need to hash out some, some, some issues and opinions and clear the air, then let's do it. Let's not let things sit and get worse. The one thing I can't stand is when we, inaction sometimes creates a very worsening situation. And we don't want that to happen. We want things to be cleared up and move along fluidly. One last thing I wanted, Pepal Park, at the conference that we all attended, or most of us attended, I think it was Jody brought up the, what's going to happen to Fairfield School? I think it was you, Jody, who said, we have to start considering what's next for that building if Fairfield moves into another building in another section of town. Just to remind you, I remember in the early 60s when that issue was a very hot issue in Saco. So we and Pepal deeded that property to Saco and there were only three things that can be on that property. A meeting house, which is a church, a burying ground, which is a cemetery, and we have the Unitarian Church and the cemetery behind it, and a school. And Jordan School and Thornton Academy, that's why they settled there in the beginning because the land was there and Pepal had made provisions for it. And that's why Fairfield School is there because it's a school. So just keep that in mind as we decide and discuss later on what's to become of Fairfield School. Again, thank you very much. This is, this has really been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Councilor Copeland, I know you had your hand up first, but in Robert's rules, Councilor Midthorne has not spoken, so I'm going to go with Councilor Midthorne. Then we'll come back to you, Councilor Copeland. Councilor Midthorne?
My bad. Been a long day. Taking notes on some of the stuff people have talked about with respect to traffic. It's funny, we don't have a traffic problem on days when there's no school. One of the issues I think we really have to address is getting the kids on the buses. How many times do we see buses that are nowhere near full transporting our children? And if a parent over on Beach Street is driving out to the middle school to drop their child off and then coming back into town or going out to work and then doing the same routine in the evening, that's four trips through Saco's busiest stretch of road, which is North Street between Garfield and Industrial Park Road. You know, it's sad that that's the busiest stretch of roadway in the whole city. That's a school issue. The schools dictate their transportation direction and how they run their bus routes and all of that. And nobody in this room really has any say-so in that matter, unfortunately. I think we're going to have some major traffic issues in the coming years as the exit 36 construction takes place. And we're all going to be impacted by that greatly and it's going to behoove everyone to work together to try and find solutions for those items. Again, with respect to the third bridge, I mean, that's state and/or federal and/or both communities that are going to need to be involved in that. I don't know how, if we can't get Bitterford to a meeting, we're going to be able to get with them to discuss a bridge anytime soon. As far as schools, schools have a mandate from the state that if somebody shows up, they have to be enrolled. If they can legally be enrolled in the school, then they're enrolled in the school. We don't really have a say-so as to if a development comes in and they're going to build 60 single-family homes that have a high potential to impact our schools, we really don't have the right to say no. And our schools don't have the right to say no. I've used the example many times and I'll use it again right now. You know, I grew up in Florida where our district north of Tampa has tripled the number of schools that it had in the 20 years since I left. The Tampa schools were opening 10 to 15 schools every year from 1990 to 2010. 20 years, they opened 10, 15 new schools every single year. I can remember driving from the area north of Tampa over to Orlando on Highway 50, which is the big east-west road. And off in this old rundown Orange Grove, they were building a hospital. And this was around 1999, year 2000. Now, that entire area is absolutely full. You can't find a vacant lot anywhere near there. You know, growth is going to come whether we want it to or not, and I agree with, we need direction. The direction is the comprehensive plan. That provides our direction every 10, 12, 15 years, whenever it's done. We're working on that. We're getting ready to contract that right now and that will be our guidepost, if you will, for the next 15 or 20 years. So it's very important when the committee takes that process on that we all have input in that and they hear us loud and clear the directions that we think the city should be going in. Until then, the two comprehensive plans that are in place, the 2011, I believe 2011 revision and the 2018 revisions are our current direction. That's where we're headed. And, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, our current zoning, as we look at the zoning ordinance revision, is still somewhat in compliance with that, with those existing documents, so we don't have a conflict that direction. But what we can do is on the backside, when the new comprehensive plan comes out, hopefully there will be a list of action items to adjust the zoning ordinance revision now to meet the new comprehensive plan. So we can take care of both of those kind of simultaneously on the backend and make those adjustments. And finally, I think we all need to be very proactive when we're thinking about a lot of the current ordinance issues and, and try and build that foundation looking forward as opposed to reacting to the present. Reacting to the present's good, but usually it's only good for the next 15 minutes. But what we really need to be doing is looking at those foundations. We go back to the schools. You know, of the last three state construction bid lists, we were on one of them. Why was it our school boards, the two proceedings, never got on the bid list? I mean, Young School was still here. It was still Portables then, but they never put it up for the bid list? These are some of the fundamental questions we really need to be asking ourselves as a community and try to move those things along. Because I can tell you right now, this community does not have the financial resources to fund a school, fund the necessary revisions at wastewater, fund a bridge, fund many other municipal improvements necessary to support the infrastructure that the growth is going to bring. It's going to be dependent on all of us working collaboratively with the state, possibly with the federal government, with the issues around Camp Ellis, and make all of that happen in parallel. And it's a tall task for any of us and all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Midthorne. Councilor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of really quick points. I didn't mention, mention about our historic district and our historic town. I think that's critical that we maintain that and, you know, somehow get help for some of these houses that are quite old and in disrepair. I sit here in a 250-year, eight-year-old house that we're restoring, but there are some that people can't restore them for whatever reason. And we need to, we need to deal with that somehow. I don't know the solution, but it's so important that we maintain our character, you know, our natural environment and our history and, and all that. I have to agree with Peter Contras, Scott Truss about the solar panels. I'm all about it. I had them in my house in Portland. My father in 1978 had them in his manufacturing facility and, you know, it's a huge opportunity. We cannot be left out of this. There is an 80-acre parcel, I believe that's under DEP review right now for that to happen. But I learned from the Conservation Commission that one panel equals seven trees. So keep that in mind, you know? It's okay to cut down a couple of trees to put up some solar panels because the return on that investment is sevenfold. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Any other comments?
Mayor Doyle, if I could?
Denise?
Yes.
Director Corvette, thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things, I agree with all of the respectful comments that have been made. I just wanted to update. And I thank you, Councilor Midthorne, for suggesting that. We do have a direction. It's called the comp plan and the 2011, the 2018 is the direction, is our tool that we should be using on a regular basis. That said, I think that that is what is the reasoning and the rationale with Mayor Doyle's interest in creating a long-range planning committee rather than just a comp plan committee because the comp plan committee is initiated, begun, and when the role is completed, then the job is done. But the long-range planning committee would actually be charged with producing the new comp plan and in charge of implementing the comp plan, which includes updating council on a regular basis, working with staff on a regular basis and working with the council on a regular basis to, and as front and center to guide planning board decision. So we aren't put in a juxtaposition, if you will, of like, are we doing the comp plan or we not? And where there's a conflict, then we need to address that. I wanted to say that. Also, with the market analysis, I know that some of the data that's been quoted and used in the conversation, I want you to keep in mind that 10-year-old data that goes from 2009 to 2019, all of the new businesses we brought in last year are not reflective of that. So we brought in 400 new jobs, right? And so that's not reflected in that data. And as a matter of fact, we've asked the consultants to produce the 2020 data and do a new 10-year analysis and see what that looks like. So that, that brought in $60 million worth of commercial investment in the city of Saco, which translated to over $21 million worth of new taxable valuation, which translated to over $400,000 new tax revenue in the general fund. So I just want people to keep that in mind and not think about what happened 29 to 2019 because keep in mind that data also started, you know, on the heels of the recession, right? And the larger cities and communities that were well poised to still take on businesses were the ones that, that, that looked better. Also, when it comes to residential and looking at how we are as a city comparatively, understanding the data that basically shows that, I think it was like, it basically eight to four, right? We had a lot more residential than we had commercial. And we replicate Falmouth. Well, you know, here's the good news about that. If you look at the greater Portland area, where do people want to live? People want to live in Falmouth, right? Great schools, great community, great residential property. We need to sell ourselves on that. Does that mean we need to attract more residences? No. But we need to know that that's not that bad. It's just different, right? And so we're more like Falmouth in that regard. And so there's a lot of data analysis that can be done from, from that. And it's not all negative, I guess is what I'm trying to say. The other piece that I wanted to say is the market analysis also so far has also shown that our residents love to live here, but they either live here, but they don't work here and they don't do both, right? And whereas some of these larger communities that have a more diverse residential business climate and community, people work in Portland, they live in Portland. There's a higher percentage. So those numbers are skewed that way. And so when you look at the data, I think that's something that we want to take into consideration. But most importantly, we're going into, hopefully, finalizing the zoning ordinance. And equally as importantly, I want the planning board to understand that they've done a phenomenal job. We've been without a consultant now for the better part of a year, right? And we've been doing this pretty solo with staff. And I think we've made some significant progress. Is it a perfect document? Probably not. But it's a living document, as Bob had said several meetings back. And to your point, Peter, about solar, I mean, some of those areas are going to be parked, you know, to be dealt with on amendments while we can make some more significant research and significant contributions to why we're going to make the decisions that we make. And I think some of those amendments probably should wait till more of the comp plan is down the road so that we can actually make some intelligent decisions about how we want to, how we want to move forward with that. So I just wanted to thank also the council and the planning board for agreeing to this joint meeting. Thank you.
Last call for comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Don?
Yeah, thank you. Just some comments to wrap up if I can. I know you have to move on to the rest of your agenda and I appreciate everything we've done here this evening. It's been very, I think, informative and productive. The first thing I would like to do at this point, just some closing remarks. I'd like to really extend some special thanks to Nathan Johnston, your liaison to the planning board. He has been faithfully there every meeting. We've spent some particularly difficult, very difficult evenings dealing with very significant issues on the zoning ordinance revision as well as site plan and subdivision. And Nathan has been right there with us and has been participating all along, been very, you know, helpful to us in giving us his viewpoints, and I want to thank him personally for that. As we approach the comp plan, I'm looking forward and hope that I can be a participant in the comp plan, under task that we're going to be undertaking pretty soon. That's a very, very important ingredient, and I think this meeting tonight was the kickoff, if you will, to the, I think, what should be a continued communication process, as others have implied, between you folks and us and the comp plan committee about where we're going in the city in the future. It's interesting to hear that Bill, you're in favor of a long-range planning committee. I know that a former city administrator had talked about that, and that's an intriguing thing. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not totally in favor of it. I would like to see with your indulgence if the planning board taking a lesser role in just routine reviews of applications and taking on more of a role in discussing and hashing out the planning process for Saco as it goes forward in the future. hashing out the planning process for Saco as it goes forward in the future. If we can spend more time doing that, then I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do that instead of a long-range planning committee, but I would be intrigued to see how far just the regular Planning Board could go on this process and how much we could contribute to advance planning in the city of Saco. So I, I'd like to pursue that, as I indicated before, a little bit further. I'm looking forward to having more of these meetings with you folks. Instead of being a portion of your regular Monday night city council meetings, I think, as we've done in years past, we, we should have entire evenings dedicated to this process, where hopefully after we get past COVID-19 and we can once again sit in the room, we can have, what I recall, were some very productive three, four-hour-long meetings where there was a lot of interchange of ideas, a lot of discussion, and some very important and productive things came out of those meetings in the past. I think that was important, and I look forward, you know, hopefully to that process occurring again in that format. Once again, I want to thank members of the council and you, Mayor Doyle, for, for taking this time with us this evening. It's, it's been helpful to me. I want to encourage any one of you, anytime you have any thoughts, anytime you have any, any complaints, whatever, please contact me. Please contact me, tell me what's on your mind, send me an email, text message me if you, you know, staff can provide you, you know, my email or my, my phone number, obviously. Please don't hesitate, you know, to get ahold of me and, and register whatever you're thinking at that point in time. So once again, Mayor Doyle, and members of the council, I appreciate it, and thank you very much for your indulgence this evening and all of this.
Thank you, Chairman Giroux, and thank you to all the Planning Board members who thankfully give up their time every Tuesday night, or seems like every Tuesday night, and then for also joining us on this Monday night to be a part of what I hope will be ongoing discussions in the future about how to move Saco in, in a forward momentum and also, you know, take it into account Saco's great history and how we can incorporate that in, in moving forward. So again, thank you to the Planning Board for everything you do, and, and we'll get another meeting scheduled for early 2021. With that, we move on to item 10, which is new business. Just want to make sure we didn't lose any of the councilors in the, the switch over here. And, and we didn't, so that's great. Up first, we have item A, which is a county-wide extended police authority agreement, mutual aid assistance. What happened was as a result of the COVID outbreak at the York County Jail, which has been deemed cleared by the CDC, but as a result of that, law enforcement communities or law enforcement entities started thinking, well, what happens if our police department or our communications center has an outbreak like that? And how do we, how do we still function and have a police department that represents the community? So this county-wide extended police authority agreement was, was started to talk about, and I've asked Police Chief Clements, and, and he's in favor of it, and he's going to kind of come on board and give us a, a general overview, but you have the document in your packet, but he's going to come on, come on and, and provide us some overview and answer any questions. With that, Chief Clements, thank you for joining us and welcome.
Mayor Doyle, councilors, thank you very much for having me tonight. So this, as you stated, came about because of what occurred down at the York County Jail, and some conversation was started amongst the District One Police Chiefs about, you know, what happens if, you know, unfortunately, there's a COVID outbreak at a police department, and how do we, you know, work together in York County to help police another community? So this document was drafted. It's essentially very close to the mutual aid agreements that we have with our surrounding communities. This would just extend to York County. So if there was some type of an outbreak that occurred anywhere in York County where the entire agency was impacted or a significant portion was impacted, countywide, we could, you know, share helping to police that community. And in return, if something unfortunately ever happened here in Saco, they would do the same thing for us. So that's, I think that kind of covers it in a nutshell. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Clements. I, I'm sure the council has some questions, but I just had one question, costs. What are the costs? Or are kind of any anticipated costs or maybe even unanticipated costs?
So each community that would be, take part in this would bear the burden of the cost. So if we, you know, for example, sent an officer to Kittery, or they sent somebody up here, whichever community is, is assisting would bear the cost of, you know, fueling the vehicles, salary benefits, that type of thing. I'm, I'm sure little things like gas, I'm sure we could work that out. I mean, if, if we had an outbreak here and we needed assistance, obviously, I would want to at least fill up their cars with gas, and I'm sure they would do the same thing for us. So little things like that, I think, you know, we'd work out. But the main cost, which is, you know, the salary benefits, that would be incurred by the, by each agency.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions for Chief Clements regarding the county-wide extended police authority agreement, mutual aid assistance? Counsel Archer, then Counselor Copeland. Counsel Archer.
Hey, Chief, how's it going? Do we have an agreement like that? I thought we had an agreement like this in place, not COVID-specific, but just in general. Wasn't that brought to us a few years ago?
Well, we do have the extended police authority for, you know, that, that counts anywhere in the state.
Yes.
But it, but when you, when it comes, that does not include doing traffic enforcement, you know, or doing car stops or anything like that. This is totally, this, this actually gives, that, that's kind of an optional or additional police power. This would be full police powers.
Okay.
Same thing, you know, we have a mutual aid agreement with the city of Bedford, with Old Orchard, with Scarborough. If they call for mutual aid, it's the, it's basically the same thing. We're just, District One Chiefs took a look at this and thought, you know, with what happened again at York County, we had to take any arrestees to Cumberland County, so they were able to work that out. But that took over a week to get that straightened out. We're trying to get in front of this and make sure that if something does happen, that we're prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Copeland.
Hi, Chief. Thank you for all the good things you do for this community. I understand that we have this with our immediately local neighbors, and, you know, that's reasonable. And I know that we do the, the bigger picture, like Counselor Archer was talking about with the state, but I, I just have a little concern. I mean, I, I mean, I know that our people in this community care about this community. Our officers are exceptional. And I don't know about those other communities and whether their leadership is such that they're, you know, a community safety officer rather than a force. Those are, you know, just little differences, but, you know, we've seen across this country some horrible things happen. And I'm concerned that we're relinquishing too much of your authority, quite frankly. And I understand that there's a, you know, there's a possibility of, you know, our city getting COVID and needing that extra help, but I'm just concerned. This feels to me like the Patriot Act where, and then, you know, then after that, then they have all of our, I don't know, just something that seems off with this. I don't, I don't really like it. I'm, I'm sorry. Hopefully you can convince me otherwise.
Well, we would, I would not be relinquishing any authorities if, you know, you know, something were to happen here in Saco and we requested assistance, say a COVID outbreak or something, any of those officers that would come, you know, from another community, they would, they would be working for us. So it wouldn't be something where they come in and they kind of cowboy things or whatever. They would be here doing the same thing that our officers do. More likely than not, if we had an officer or two of ours on duty, they would handle the bulk of it, but these officers would be backup officers or assist on calls for service. They wouldn't, you know, if we get to a point like that, we're not going to be going out and aggressively attacking traffic, you know, enforcement and stuff like that. I mean, so it's not like they're going to come in and, and just want to do whatever they want to do. I mean, there's an agreement here, and, you know, the communities that we work with here in York County and our neighbors to the north as well, all have kind of the same philosophy that we do. You know, it's one of the things I think that I'm so happy about with Maine law enforcement is compared to some places across the country. You know, everything in Maine is standardized as far as the training and everything else. So the officers here all get the same training. We all have the same way of looking at things. And I think overall, as far as community policing goes, I think we all do the same things. And you, and, you know, I see that in the news and different things that I receive from the state where officers are doing the same type of thing. And it's not like this is a total, you know, go anywhere. We are trying to keep this in York County or so that, you know, or like, you know, for example, we have an agreement with Scarborough because we know those communities a little bit better. So I just look at this as something that, again, if, if somebody were really in a bad way in other communities, say, you know, Wells or any of those communities, I would look at it as something that we would, if we had the ability to do it, we could get on and help them out to help, you know, police their community. And like I said, I would hope it never happens, but this is a very dangerous thing that's out there, and it's very unpredictable. And if something were to happen here, then, you know, I would hope that some other communities would step up to come help us out.
I agree. I'm concerned about de-escalation. I know that our officers go, don't you have a, a system of all that training that's here in Saco that not necessarily other city around here has? So I know that our officers are specifically trained by our training on de-escalation.
Oh, I agree. Our, our training that we have, there's, there's training that's received by the academy. We did opt to get this system so we could provide enhanced training, but as far as de-escalation training goes, every officer in the state is trained exactly the same way when they go through the academy. We just, you know, for us, we opted to, to step it up a little bit with that system and, and provide some additional things for our officers. We have had some other communities come to look at our system and, but unfortunately with COVID, we're kind of being, you know, we're, we're careful about who comes in the building.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm really glad for that. We need you guys safe to protect us and just because we need you guys safe anyway. But, but the thinking is that, you know, you say when they come out, that everyone that comes out of the academy has the same training, but, you know, what if that was like 25 years ago? A lot of changes have happened. A lot of mindsets have changed, and people have become, you know, more aware or more dug in to where they were. And that's why I really loved it when you had this system so that everybody goes through the training again. So that's, that's my concern. What we don't need here, and I know you've told me before that it's not a thing that Maine endorses, we don't need a knee-on-a-neck situation here.
Correct.
And it just takes two people.
Correct, and, and I agree with you. I mean, that was something that was very disturbing to all of us. You know, if, I don't know if it makes you feel better or worse, but I attended the Police Academy in Maine 30 years ago, and every year we have ongoing training. There's updated training in every profession that's out there, including law enforcement. Things change over time, whether it's court cases, whether it's training, whether it's national or international events, there are things that change, and we change with it. And so, you know, a lot of the things that were trained in the academy 30 years ago when I went, they either don't train anymore or they've updated that training. Well, I have had to keep up with that training and do even more. So there's mandatory training every year that we have to go through over and above. It's not like you go to the academy and then say, well, we're all set, we're good, and...
No, I get that. I, I understand continuing education, but I just...
Everything's updated, so...
De-escalation is really important to me. I think if we stay de-escalated, we'll be a happier community.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any other questions for Chief Clements? So Counsel, you'll see this as an action item on the next council meeting. Chief Clements, thank you for joining us and giving us a presentation on that mutual aid assistance.
Thank you for having me.
Up next is B Charter Amendments Discussion. Counselor Minthorne suggested, or, excuse me, submitted several charter amendments that he would like to take a look at. And so the idea was, City Administrator and Ken Rath and myself said, oh, these are Counselor Minthorne's ideas at this point. Bring it up to the council and ask if they have any ideas. These are, these are charter amendments that Counselor Minthorne has presented. They have not been vetted by the city, by the city of Saco yet. We're at the very introductory phase of seeing what other charter amendments the council would like to pursue or not pursue. Again, this is the, as I've said before, the new business is much like a workshop type of thing where we're bringing stuff forward so that you guys can discuss and provide any additional information, give your feedback, and then discuss further amendments if you'd like to do any down the road. So with that, City Administrator Ken Rath, do you want to provide any, any additional information related to your memorandum that's on, that's included in the packet on page nine?
Yeah, I don't think anything specific. You can see the submissions from Counselor Minthorne, the four potential charter amendments for your review. And again, this is just to begin a discussion here and invite more proposals from all of you as we consider these for our next election, which will be next June. So, no, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Counselor Minthorne?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Basically, the thought with some of these, and these were written, gosh, probably in January, the thought at that time, a couple different things were going on. One, with respect to 205C, of not knowing, as we currently have all of our positions, we're all working in full-time jobs and that kind of thing. The one thought was, I know Nathan, when he was deputy mayor, there were probably opportunities where he could have ducked in on a committee and on behalf of Marston or vice versa that potentially could have occurred with those of us. And as this council will likely grow younger in age and time, since I'm the oldest guy here, I don't plan on being here forever. I, I think 205C kind of lends to the idea that if you have a couple people in leadership that have very full plates with their normal job, that have still chosen to run and become elected officials, this may be one way to, to spread the workload out amongst the leadership team, if you will. 206C, we went ahead and we changed our terms to give us all three-year terms in the staggered 2-3-4 setup that we're transitioning through right now. But what we didn't do is clean up the language around vacancies. And what this basically allows for is kind of standardizing that language. At the same time, in the case of the mayor stepping down for whatever reason, if the deputy mayor then becomes the mayor... if the deputy mayor then becomes the mayor, and there's still time left in their term after the next municipal election, I don't think they should be out in the cold. They should be allowed to return and finish their unexpired term. And the person that fills in that seat is an interim in like the council seat for, until that, you know, time space is filled. And as a council, we have the ability to fill that seat with the interim. But I think if there's still a year or two left, it, you know, it should be able to be done in that fashion and not have anybody, you know, step up and then you're out the door kind of thing, as it potentially might be. 207D, we have several boards, committees, commissions, where we have some individuals that haven't shown up for meetings in three, four, or five times. And we really don't have a mechanism to take people off of those that aren't really participating. So this would add some language to give the mayor that authority with our approval as council, to take some of these people that aren't showing up and, and replacing them with people who really are committed to the city and want to volunteer in that manner. And then finally, 908 adds the code of conduct into the charter so that it becomes codified and referred to the same way we did like our personnel policy a few years back, for those of you that were here. And then the, the code of conduct would go through the more elaborate several meeting process for any edits to it in the future, as seen fit by the council. So that's kind of those. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or just, you know, again, we don't have to do anything now. I welcome all of you to please add to the list. I know there are many more items that we've talked about over the last few years. We'd like to fix this. We'd like to fix that. And then what happens? We get into budget. Everything grinds to a halt. Nothing gets fixed. We come out of budget. We go into the summers, and we don't do anything. So maybe we can work on some of these as we work toward the, the January timeframe, since we're all here for a little while longer this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. So the, if you guys have additional charter amendments that you would like to discuss, please send those to City Administrator Kenrath, and we will put those on another workshop or another new business item to discuss in the future. Again, with the ideas, if, if you have more ideas to bring them forward, specifically, Counselor Menthorn's filling of vacancies, although I don't plan to go anywhere, let me be clear on that. There was a situation...
You better not, because I don't want that seat.
There was a situation earlier this year where the, the school board vacancies that were created by a couple of folks resigning, there was a discrepancy between the way you fill the vacancies on the school board and the way you fill the vacancies on the council. And making those parallel and, and making those identical will help in filling the vacancies moving forward. So with that, Counsel Archer, you had your hand up. We'll go to you first, and then Counselor Purdy. Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking on 206 specifically, and, and, and Mr. Mayor, you just brought it up, because this is what I was going to talk about, is how can we make it more parallel with the school? Can we also, at one point, it talks about, I'm not going to find it at the moment, but we talked about appointments for a temporary, can we also consider that with the school board? Because we did have two vacancies for approximately half a year. So I didn't see that written into here. I know this is draft form. Again, we hadn't really talked about it. But it's something similar to the school as well, to help fill those vacancies in the interim. I'd like to see that if possible.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Counselor Dunn emailed me earlier. He knew he wasn't going to be able to be here tonight with, with some suggestions as well. I don't know, did he email it to you as well, Brian or Bill?
No, I didn't see his comments. Just a note that he was going to be absent tonight.
Okay, okay. I will, I will forward that to you, instead of going into too much detail and reading them completely. It was pretty much along the same lines as, as cleaning up some of the, some of the things with the staggered three-year terms and changing. He was looking to maybe appoint the Deputy Mayor on a yearly basis where, and, and the city council liaison positions based on the fact that it's possible that we could have a, a new council almost every, every year. Then I will forward that to you, Brian, and, and we can, we can look at that. This, this isn't all, this isn't going to happen tonight. So we've got a while to go on this one before it's voted on. So then you can all look at it and, and make comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. And if you send that to Brian, we'll, we will make sure that the full council gets Counselor Gunn's comments. Any, again, this is, this is just the beginning discussions on charter amendments. And if you have any charter amendments that you would like to have reviewed, please send them to City Administrator Kenrath, and we will take them up at another meeting in new business and start really working through those items, and then have them vetted by city staff and legal before they go out for next year, or if they go out for next year. Anything further on charter amendments?
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator Kenrath?
Thank you. I just want to know also that as far as a code of conduct that was referenced, city staff, we have been working on a code of conduct. It's currently in legal review, and that's going to be coming forward to you sometime in the next few meetings for your review and edits. But that is in the works, and we will have that before you, probably sometime in November. Just a note on that.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. That's an important point. If there's no other comments on charter amendments, moving on to administrative updates, City Administrator Kenrath?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting with an update on some property transfers, we will be having the closing with Habitat for Humanity for the property of T-Margret Road later this week. And also, our public works facility on North Street is on track and slated for mid-November at the closing there. Just another update on elections. Obviously, everyone knows by now, hopefully, that voting is ongoing at the City Hall Auditorium. This Friday, we will be open Friday, the 30th until 6:00 PM for extended hours for in-person voting here. An important note, again, though, is voting on Election Day will be at Thornton Academy only. It will not be here at City Hall. That's only for early voting through this Friday, October 30. So on Election Day, all voting is at Thornton Academy. Our communications team, thanks again to them. They have been putting the word out very strenuously about the polling place change. The corpse office also placed ads noting the location change in the Courier that ran last week and will run again this week, as well as the Port Press Herald last week and this week. So we have worked hard to get the word out. Thank you to our police department for putting up the message boards out on the roads during the new polling place also. An update on the numbers. As of today, we have had 8,803 absentee ballots issued and 6,758 ballots returned. So those numbers catch you up quite a bit compared to last week. But obviously, those numbers change on a day-by-day basis. I'll skip over the senior meals program that was noted at the top of the meeting. But again, November 11th and November 19th are the upcoming dates for the next, for the next meal events. And if anyone's interested in volunteering, of course, I know we had a number of people here interested in doing that, please contact Amelia to sign up there. A note, a new playground will be being put up by Parks and Rec at the Orion Road location that will be starting next Wednesday. The work should only take one to two days and should be wrapped up by Thursday. And lastly, just one more plug from my first city administrators' open office hours. That'll be tomorrow, October 27th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM here on the second floor of City Hall. So look forward to seeing everyone there. That's all I have. Any questions? Happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Counselor McPhail?
Brian, does that number of the ballots include the in-person voting that has been done as well? Or is that just the physical ballots that have been mailed?
I believe it includes in-person voting, but I will clarify that with Michelle Hughes.
Thank you.
Any further questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any discussion and comment from the city council? Counselor Copeland?
Just a quick point from earlier. It was wonderful to have the connection with the planning board and to actually talk about these things. I think that's pretty amazing. The point did come up that the council just does like finances and budget things, and I just wanted to spell that. I think that we're involved with policy. We're involved in our, we're embedded in our community. I, I know that each one of you sitting here, well, sitting in your homes on the council are involved. And it's, we're not just, just not just accountants. I'm certainly not just an accountant. So I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any further council discussion and comment? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the last two weeks, we had two very successful free meal box food distributions, one at the Elks and last week at Saco Middle School. Just want to let our residents know that this coming Wednesday, from 10:00 to 2:00, there is a third opportunity for the food boxes, and that will be at Old Orchard Beach High School, working again in conjunction with Saco, Age Friendly and the group out there. So from 10:00 to 2:00 at Old Orchard Beach High School, there will be another free food from the Farm to Families program.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a big shout out to all of our senior volunteers that are the engine behind all these ballots going through the system. It is really, Michelle has got a great group of seniors that are well-trained, and they're doing an amazing job, given the numbers this year. It's just unbelievable. I, I know we're going to be on track to set multiple records in the city.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Any further council discussion and comment? Saying none. Moving on to, there's no executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer? Any discussion? A roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 6-0 at 8:13 PM. Again, everyone, thank you for all that you do, and thank you for the good discussions tonight and the good discussions to come. Hope all of you and your families are safe. Be well.